Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Monica Duran.
Here.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Kristy Davis.
Here.
Janice Hoppy.
Present.
Tim Fitzgerald.
Here.
George Pond.
Present.
Genevieve Wooden.
Present.
Larry Matthews. Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the minutes of February 8th or February 22nd? If none, they stand as presented. We don't have any proclamations tonight, so we can move right to citizens' right to speak. I don't, I didn't, I don't know if we have anybody, yep, looks like we do.
Good evening. Adam Wiley, 9865 West 35th Avenue. Here tonight just to ask for your vote in support for the traffic calming measures, speed humps on Johnson Street. I was trying to think about what to say, and on the way here, my son said, "I just want to be able to ride my bike out there without worrying about cars coming around the corner too fast." So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Colin.
Madam Mayor, Honorable Members of the Council, my name is Colin Aniston. I'm a constituent services representative for Congressman Ed Perlmutter, and I just had a couple brief items I wanted to share with the council. First off, on March 24th, we are having a telephone town hall, so for anyone interested in getting an update on what is happening in Congress and what Congressman Perlmutter is working on as far as legislation goes, we invite the council to join us from 7:00 to 8:00 PM, or any interested members of the Wheat Ridge community. And you can sign up for the telephone town hall at our website, which is perlmutter.house.gov, or you can call our office at 303-274-7944. The other item is we are now getting underway with our Congressional Art Competition, which is open to all high school students, and it's a really kind of neat competition throughout the whole 7th Congressional District, where the winning piece hangs in the tunnel connecting the Capitol to the House Office Building. So it hangs there for a year, so all the members of Congress that use that tunnel are constantly looking at those pieces of work. So, really neat competition, and I invite all the high schoolers in Wheat Ridge to compete. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colin.
Bob. Oh, I'm sorry. Please do give your name and address.
Bob Brazel, B-R-A-Z-E-L-L, 3830 Carr Street. Okay. I have some concerns on how the city's being managed. Seems to me that when I took civics, that elected officials were supposed to represent all the people, not just their own views, or the people who agree with them. But the majority of the citizens should carry the majority of the weight in how things are done. To determine what a majority of the people want, we have elections or ballot issues. We had two of those recently, one on 38th and one on 300. On 300, some council members and the mayor should be ashamed of the fact that they ignored the public and approved the TIF. Forcing the public to put 300 on the ballot, you are the reason the city got sued. Then you don't defend 300 in court, where do you get off? On 38th, we had a vote about, after about two years of the road diet, and the public said they didn't like the road and wanted it put back like it was. You can have your pipe dreams that the vote was only about how wide the street should be, but you're lying to yourself and the public. Then you go and spend another $100,000 on some consulting firm to conduct a kindergarten class on cut and paste on designing a road we already voted to put back the way it was. We would have been better off spending the money sending some of you to civics classes. The ultimate voice is when the people, when the public votes, but some of you seem to want to ignore us. Do this at your own peril. Maybe you need to talk to former members of the Jeffco School Board about ignoring the public. Your record on votes that you wanted to approve is 0 and 2. You keep losing, so maybe you should pay attention. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Benny Gonzalez.
Mayor, council members, friends, neighbors. Benny Gonzalez, 3145 Eaton Street. I want to voice my concern, issue about building structure heights going up in our neighborhood, particularly 3100 Fenton. Three-story structure. I was told it was going to be a two-story with a rooftop deck. It's three stories, and it just wiped out my view of the mountains totally. Like, this big structure of a building that don't even match the neighborhood has gone up and kind of like took away my view. One of the reasons I moved to the city of Wheat Ridge is because of the quaint, cute little houses that are there and in existence. And I've seen big structures like this going up, popping up all around the city of Wheat Ridge. Next thing you know, it's going to look like North Denver. Let's not have this be North Denver. Let's keep the city of Wheat Ridge the cute, quaint little place that it is. Let's have the residents, you know, have a say on whether or not a big, three-story structure, 35 feet or just under, be put up next to their house. Take away their mountain view. They don't even fit the community's architecture. Let's have our buildings that we're going to be putting up in our neighborhoods match the neighborhood, match the houses that are already there. This is, this is an investor that comes in, buys this property, gonna make tons of money at the city of Wheat Ridge residents' expense by, to me, degrading the quality of life by taking away my view of the mountains. That was one of the main reasons why I bought my house of where it is. Friends, neighbors, I encourage you, if you have something to say, get up and voice it as well. That's pretty much all I have to say right now, other than maybe we could have a voice on if we're going to have one of them structures go up. Let's vote on it around the neighborhood. See if it's okay with everybody, you know? Match the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Benny. Okay. Thank you, Benny. I don't have any one else for citizens' right to speak. We can go ahead and move on to...
Madam Mayor, may I make a response to one of the people that spoke?
Yes.
I had planned to do this earlier, but Mr. Brazel's comments are in line with what I was going to speak about tonight. Last, at the last meeting, the last council meeting, several of us were accused of being divisive, for trying to get this council to back the will of the people. And now I'm angry that we're the ones that are divisive. There is a national problem, and it's evident here in this city, and if you'll excuse me, I'm really passionate about this, that politicians are no longer listening to the people. In this very chamber, I have heard five different politicians in the last seven months promote the theory that once people are elected to office, they need to have a free rein. The quotes, the quote was made that the common person just isn't competent or capable of understanding the complicated business of running city government. And I think that's poppycock. We work for the people, and they are totally capable of understanding what they want. The symptoms of this are both the 300 Amendment and 38th Avenue. Now, let's get away from ideology for a minute and go to facts. The fact is, the people passed 300, and when it became law, it was a valid and lawful part of our charter, and it will remain so until such time as the people repeal or change it, or a gaggle of judges comes through and says they're going to repeal or change it. As it stands right now, 300 is a valid law, and we took an oath to uphold the charter. And I sincerely believe we should have done so, especially since we know through an election that that was the will of the people. Now, I've heard excuses. Well, it's going to be too expensive. Our city attorney has assured me that the cost to defend the charter in its totality would have been no significantly different than to claim neutral, so that excuse goes away. I had one gentleman that I've been talking to claim that, well, since 40% of the people didn't like it, only 40% of the council had to support the charter. And that, again, just isn't the way our society is set up. So, the fact is, I believe we all should have defended the charter in its entirety. And then when it comes to following the will of the people, the charter says we should strive to be responsive to the will of the citizens, and they give us some wiggle room there, because we don't always have good knowledge of the total will of all the citizens. But in both of these cases, they were elections, and once the people passed those measures, it became the will of 100% of the people, and we had no business to ignore it. I just am fearful that people are getting angry, and it's on a national level, and it's coming to this level. And I don't think it's the people that are saying we need to defend the charter and defend the will of the people that are being divisive. And if we're not going to do that, if I'm going to be divisive for trying to defend the will of the people, then I think I stand in pretty good company. And I did make a quote up here because I didn't want to mess it up, and it's very succinct. "In free governments, the rulers are the servants, and the people are their superiors and sovereigns." And that's from Ben Franklin. And that's my feeling on what we should have done. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, Ms. Davis.
I'm sorry, I just want to ask a question for the gentleman that was speaking on the 41st and Fenton. I'm, or 31st and Fenton, sorry.
3100 Fenton.
I'm guessing, so a lot of that went through, I'm guessing, some of our code and the building code and that type of thing, is that correct? I just want to make sure that that property, I mean, I guess it'd be nice for him to hear kind of the process or what the, what the ordinance allows or what the code allows.
Sure. It was, did receive a valid building permit. The building permit verified compliance with building height requirements, setback requirements. They are, as I think the gentleman acknowledged, building very close to the maximum 35-foot height requirement and very close to the perimeter setback requirements as well, but we have verified that it does comply, both through the building permit and then subsequent surveys.
Thank you. Anything else? Anybody else care to comment? All right, let's move on. There are any changes in tonight's agenda? Let's go on to ordinance, excuse me, ordinance on second reading, which is Council Bill 032016. Mr. Pond.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm happy to present Council Bill Number 032016, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 3865 Kipling Street from Residential 1 to mixed-use commercial, case number WZ15-12 Equinox. The applicant is requesting approval for zone change from Residential 1 to mixed-use commercial for property located at 3865 Kipling Street. And I think there's a staff presentation, so I will stop there.
I need a ordinance number to start on this.
This will be ordinance number 1593.
I'm going to open a public hearing.
Good evening, for the record. Meredith Record, Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. Case number WZ15-09 is a request for approval of a zone change from R1 to mixed-use commercial at 3865 Kipling. I'd like to enter into the record the comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance, case file and packet materials, and the contents of this digital presentation. All notification and posting requirements have been met, therefore there is jurisdiction to hear this case. This is an aerial photo taken in 2014. The property is outlined in turquoise with north to the top. Kipling Street runs along the eastern perimeter with 38th Avenue to the south. Again, this is a request for a zone change to mixed-use commercial. This is the first step for approval of redevelopment of the site under MUC zoning, and if approved and prior to any construction, there will be a site development plan review to confirm compliance with the city zoning code and the architectural and site design manual. And the purpose of the zone change is to modify the list of uses to simplify the review and approval. Again, we're at the northwest corner of 38th and Kipling. The property, as you can see in the aerial, is irregularly shaped. It does have two vacant structures on the northern portion of the site, which were once single-family homes, and I believe there were some farming operations that occurred on the property as well. This parcel and the zone change request does not include the piece at the hard corner of 38th and Kipling. That is under a separate ownership and has a fueling station and convenience store on it. The R1 Zone District is the city's largest lot, single-family residential zoning, and it allows only single-family residential and public uses such as parks and schools. This is that same 2014 aerial, this time with the zoning overlay on it. Again, the property is outlined in turquoise, and what the different colors on the map represent are the different zonings in the area. So the subject property and some of the adjacent property, including the rec center to the northwest, are all zoned R1. That's designated in the yellow tone. The red property is designated C1, and the hard corner of 38th and Kipling, as well as the property along the south side, the property to the east, all are zoned C1. C1 is an open commercial zoning category that allows office service and retail. Directly to the west is a dental office with planned commercial development zoning. Just a few slides of the property. This is looking north from 38th Avenue to the property frontage. In the right-hand side of the image, you can see the car wash affiliated with the gas station on the corner of 38th and Kipling. This property sort of wraps around it. This is looking northwest from 38th Avenue to the adjacent dentist office. This is looking east towards that same fueling station on the corner. This is looking east along 38th Avenue. The property is on the left-hand side, and on the right-hand side, you can see some of the improvements that were installed as part of the Kipling Ridge development. This is looking west from Kipling. You can see these are some of those abandoned structures in white on the, I'm sorry, the right-hand side. I'm dyslexic a little bit. I apologize. And this is looking northwest towards the rec center. You can see the green roofs in the background, and that is part of the rec center site. And then finally, looking north on, along Kipling, and the property is on the left. So, again, the applicant is requesting the property to be rezoned to mixed-use commercial. We find mixed-use commercial zoning appropriate along major commercial corridors and at community and employment activity centers, and it is established to encourage medium-to-high-density mixed-use development. It does promote a mix of land uses that are more urban in character and more pedestrian-friendly. It also has a more predictable entitlement of process. And at this point, the applicant does not have a specific scenario as to development of the property. I included this chart because it shows differences between the R1 zoning, which is currently on the property, and the proposed mixed-use. The R1 zoning really only allows single-family residential and public uses, whereas, again, the mixed-use zoning would allow residential, commercial, or some sort of combination thereof. The height, as you scroll down, maximum building height in the residential zone district is 35 feet, and in the mixed-use commercial, any residential structure, or any structure having residential use within it would be limited to 35 feet as well. Commercial structures can go up to 50 feet. If the rezoning is approved, the applicant would then submit a review of a site plan and a subdivision application. Both of those would be administrative reviews, but they would have to meet the standards in the zoning code and architectural and site design manual. So the zone change process included a neighborhood meeting, which was held on December 15th. We had only one person attend, who was representing the property to the south on Kipling Ridge, which is just south of 38th Avenue. And that gentleman was supportive of the rezoning and the reinvestment in the property. We have not received any negative comments, either in writing or as part of our public hearing process. We did our standard 15-day referral and did not receive any concerns from city departments or agencies. And again, subsequent referral for the site plan review and the subdivision will be required as, if we move forward. Tonight, we're the final hearing on the zone change request. Again, the next steps, if this is approved, would be approval of a specific development plan, basically a site plan with building elevations for the property, a plat of some sort to consolidate, that would require a public hearing, and then finally, a building permit. So the city council is where we do have specific criteria that we use when we do an evaluation of a land use application, specifically a zone change. And this, these criteria are used to evaluate whether we think the zone change request should be supported or not. Those relate to things like impacts, traffic impacts, whether utility agencies can serve the property. The two that I think are the most significant are conformance with the comprehensive plan and whether there's a change of conditions in the area. So this is a little segment of the comprehensive plan. Again, the property is located at this, at the northwest corner of 38th and Kipling. Kipling is designated as a primary commercial corridor. This red ring around the site designates it as a community commercial center, and the pink on the property represents mixed-use commercial. So this, again, this is taken from the city's comprehensive plan. It does identify Kipling as a primary commercial corridor and is high on the city's list for revitalization and redevelopment opportunities. We do have a recreation focus further to the north, which is more centered around the rec center and the Kipling, or, yeah, the Kipling Trailhead. But this, right here at the corner, is more appropriate for a higher intensity use based on the traffic and so on. Also, if you think about it, really, the site isn't appropriate for a single-family home anymore, so in that respect, we feel that the zone change is justified. Also, we've concluded that commercial development along Kipling continues to intensify. It does carry over 41,000 cars per day, and therefore, approval of this zone change will allow further opportunity for new development, like we have to the south with the Kipling Ridge development with the Sprouts and the Starbucks. We did go to public hearing in front of Planning Commission. That was on January 21st, 2016. They did recommend approval, and there were no members of the neighborhood who spoke either in favor or opposed to the request. So ultimately, staff is recommending approval for the following reasons. We believe the zone change will promote the public health, safety, and welfare. We've concluded that the request is consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan, that the zone change will prepare the property for redevelopment and may be a catalyst for other investments in the, in the area. And finally, the criteria used to evaluate the zone change do support approval of the request. That concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff?
Why, I just, that's a pretty small site. Why would they not just go for a C1 zoning that would be consistent with what's around them? Where would the residential come in?
Well, actually, the way the zoning ordinance is written is they can't rezone to C1. It would have to be a planned commercial development application. Since they don't know exactly how they want to use the property, the mixed-use commercial makes more sense as far as predictability. Once they get their development scenario in place, then they would move forward with site plan approval. The mixed-use commercial actually has a larger array of zoning, oh, excuse me, of land uses that are allowed. The commercial one doesn't allow any sort of residential. This mixed-use could allow high-density residential. It would allow, it could, it would allow office work types of situations. It could allow retail on the bottom with residential on the top. So there are a lot more options available.
Okay, well, that would be my point. They're sitting there on a corner. If we put a lot of residential there, then we're just adding to the congestion that already exists. I mean, Kipling backs up now from the top of 32nd all the way to I-70 half the time during the day, and I'm concerned about adding cars. I mean, if people driving by, driving in and out, we're not adding cars. That would be my concern.
Sure.
Thank you. And plus, that limited access right on the corner.
I understand.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Ms. Wooden?
I see it's right next to the gulch there, and I'm sure you've already checked this, but since the floodplain's changed, I'm just curious if it falls anywhere near the floodplain.
You know, it does not, this portion of Lena Gulch, which runs catty-corner across the aerial from down here along 38th up towards Kipling, has been totally channelized, and so none of this property is impacted by the floodplain.
And then is that a retaining pond, right there?
This is part of the detention system for the rec center.
Okay. Okay, okay, thank you.
No other questions?
Mayor, if I might, I just had one more piece of information I wanted to add. Councilman Matthews contacted me and asked me to do a little research, which I was glad to do, regarding how much vacant land is remaining in the city, specifically for properties that are zoned R1, R2, and A1 and A2. So we can pull that information out of our GIS, and we did that. It's a combination of a search from our GIS as well as the assessor's data. And so when information requests like this, I talked with Mr. Matthews this afternoon, so he's aware of this already, but I just wanted to make the rest of council aware so everyone kind of has the same information. So the answer to his questions is we have 28 acres zoned R1, seven acres zoned R2, and a total of 39 acres zoned A1 or A2.
Okay. More than I would have guessed.
And that's properties that are completely vacant, as defined in the assessor's data. So there are probably some properties that have some structures on them that are under those zoning designations that might be in a position where they could be redeveloped, but that data is harder to extract without a really manual kind of property-by-property search. So this is the properties that are defined as vacant in the assessor's database.
So this property, even though there's two small structures, would it be?
Because they're abandoned, it's defined as vacant.
Okay, fine. I see another question here.
Can you email us that information?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I find it interesting as well. I don't have anyone signed up for comment, for public comment, but I understand somebody had their hand up or something. Please come on up to the microphone.
My name's Guy Sandfield. I live at 9870 West 37th Avenue. And I should have gone to the meeting, but I just wanted to make sure. We know it's also, is right across from a school, so I guess all the, that's been taken in consideration. I just, I get nods and everything. So all the laws that you can't build things right across the street from the school apply and all that stuff, I'm assuming. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your response to public comment. Any other questions? Ms. Wooden?
So there will be a site plan for this, and included in the site plan would be the use of the, the future use of the owner. And then part of that would also be the traffic access where it would fall.
Absolutely, and it would be my belief that we'd require some sort of traffic study to verify what improvements are needed to Kipling and 38th, if any, I would suspect, to accommodate the new use.
So we'll know from the site plan where the traffic access will be and what the use will be, and the study will be showing us how that?
We will.
Okay, thank you.
I'm ready to close. Oh, Mr. Pond.
I'm sorry, I'm going to add one question, just, I think as we go through some of these things, I want to discuss the criteria for review and zone changes, and I know that it's inside of our packet, but if you can just kind of, if you can just maybe give a quick overview, Meredith or Ken, as to how this is to be used and how the Planning Commission and ultimately council should be using the criteria for review, which is in our Code of Laws.
Sure. Ken, you want to, would you like to answer that? Would you like me to?
I have.
They're both.
I'm sorry. It's in the Planning Commission packet, which is an attachment to the council action form. So beginning on page three of that attachment, we can go through those. So the zone change criteria start with number one, that the change of zone promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the community, and will not result in the significant adverse effects on the surrounding area. So in regards to that, we certainly think that the mixed-use zoning allows uses that would not be adverse to the adjacent uses, which really are all commercial at this point. The dentist office to the west, the rec center, practically speaking, is a commercial use, given the level of activity that it generates, the gas station, and then, of course, the new Kipling Ridge with Sprouts and Starbucks. So I think it's consistent with that, and has the potential to really add value, much like the Kipling Ridge project did with the similar zoning. It's actually zoned C1 and developed under the ASDM standards. Number two, that adequate infrastructure facilities are available to serve the uses. And really, for us, since we're not a full-service city, we don't provide sewer and water, but we do provide a road access. It has access, it may have access, subject to approval by CDOT, a limited access probably off of Kipling, so that will provide some access to the property. And then we do think it's feasible to get some sort of a full-turning movement onto 38th Avenue. Again, as Meredith said, based on a traffic study that verifies that that's functional. I think ideally, something that would align with the Kipling Ridge access, so that we've got essentially a full-aligned intersection. Number three, the Planning Commission has to find that one of the following conditions exist, and we believe more than one are really found. Conformity with the comprehensive plan, and Meredith has already gone over that in her presentation. Zoned in air, which sometimes is the case in Wee Ridge, as you're well aware, we've got some interesting zoning out there, but we don't find that to be the case here. That has occurred, that the zone, a change in character in the area has occurred, and I think that is true. I mean, I think we've seen a significant change in the character of the area based on the redevelopment of the Kipling Ridge project. And this would really give this property the opportunity to redevelop in a similar fashion, which it can't do under the R1 zoning that's only allowed those single-family uses. So that's two of those criteria that are met. And the final one is really not applicable either. So those are the criteria for review that we believe support the request.
I appreciate that.
I believe we have reached the end of questions. I believe I'm safe to close the public hearing, and I'm looking for a motion.
Thank you. I move to approve Council Bill Number 032016, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 3865 Kipling Street, case number WZ-15-12, from residential one to mixed-use commercial on second reading, that it take effect 15 days after final publication for the following reason. One, city council has conducted a proper public hearing that meets all public notice requirements as required by Section 26-109 of Code of Laws. Two, the requested zoning, rezoning has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, which has forwarded its recommendation of approval. And three, the requested rezoning has been found to comply with the criteria for review in Section 26-112-E of the Code of Laws.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Fitzgerald. Any more discussion? Please cast your votes.
Sorry, motion carries eight-zero.
Item number two, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Madam Mayor, would you mind going to item number three? We're waiting for the projector to come back on for item number two.
You have to change the light bulb or?
Stay logged on. Should I just switch user then?
Yes, Steve's.
Okay. Oh, here.
Still go to three?
Yeah.
Okay. We have such a big schedule tonight. Item number three is motion to approve appointments to boards and commissions. And I'll read this, because then we'll go to the, as I did last time. February 22nd, city council meeting, council appointed several citizens to the various appointments and commissions. However, three seats still require a motion by council for appointments. These seats are District Two for Liquor Licensing Authority, District Four, seat for the Culture Commission, and the at-large seat for the Board of Adjustment. Now, I have asked for a council member from District, starting with District Two. Please do a motion for?
I'd like to move to appoint Anthony Davia to the Liquor Commission for a term expiring on March 2nd, 2019.
Let's go ahead and, since there's only a few, we'll go ahead and vote on those.
Was that a motion?
I need a second, please.
Was that, oh, okay.
Please cast. We're good here.
Motion carries eight-zero.
And then, once again, District Two for Cultural Commission?
It's District.
Oh, that's, uh?
There's a District Two at-large seat for Board of Adjustments.
Okay, let's go to, I'm sorry, we need District Four, is what we need.
Okay. I move to appoint Suzanne Teal to the Wee Ridge Cultural Commission.
Second?
Please cast your votes on that.
Could, for the record, could you please also add that this would be the term to expire March 2nd, 2017?
Move to appoint Suzanne Teal to the cultural, Wee Ridge Cultural Commission term to expire?
March 2nd?
March 2nd, 2017.
And the second was?
Me.
Okay.
Ms. Wooden? And pass the votes.
Okay. Motion carries eight-zero.
All right, we're good. Then we move to District?
Two again.
Two again, right?
Okay. I move to appoint Rocky Germano of District Two. He's reapplied for the member-at-large seat on the Board of Adjustments and the term to expire March 2nd, 2019.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Urban, and we're casting our votes.
Motion carries eight-zero.
And finally, I'm going to ask Mayor Protim, we have a member-at-large appointment?
I think that was it.
We're good? Oh.
Yeah, the at-large position was just appointed.
Okay, we're good. Then we've got them all? I believe we're through with that?
Yep.
Okay, then let's move back to item number two.
You're moving too fast for me.
Okay, item number two, this is a motion to approve installation of a traffic calming device on Johnson Street between 35th Avenue and 38th Avenue in accordance with the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. This is the issue that Mr. Wiley spoke about earlier. The issue is residents on Johnson Street petition the city to address traffic issues for the segment from 35th Avenue to 38th Avenue in accordance with the city's Neighborhood Traffic Management Policy. City staff met with the residents at a neighborhood meeting, discussed the issue, and devised a plan to mitigate traffic. In accordance with the NTMP policy, residents secured a petition with the required number of signatures indicating support for the installation of the traffic calming device and are hereby seeking approval for implementation. And for everybody's reference, this is directly east of Discovery Park.
Steph? Here we are.
Good evening. My name is Steve Nguyen. I'm the Engineering Manager for the Public Works Department to present the item. On March 18, 2015, the city received a letter from the residents from Johnson Street requesting to address traffic problem in their street. And following that, we processed the letter and set up a meeting with the resident on May 20th, 2015, and basically just to understand the traffic concerns and made the resident aware of the available tools that we have under the NTMP program. After that, the resident requested to ask the city to proceed with the traffic data collections and also street evaluations. Traffic data, we had a collection on April shortly after that, just to study the volume types of traffic behaviors that we're trying to figure out there. A couple of things came out from the results. Obviously, there were some traffic speeding that we found, and because Johnson Street is flowing down a slope, the northbound traffic seems to travel faster, you know, because of the natural terrain. And we also noticed there's random surge in traffic volumes that could be accounted for when Kipling gets backed up during the rush hour. You can see the layout of Johnson Street. It's a natural, it's just a natural bypass that could be explained why that street sometime experienced surge in traffic volumes. And at the same time, staff did come out and survey the street to make sure that there will be no adverse effect if traffic calming devices to install. We also look at drainage, traffic safety, and the overall operation to make sure that that, there will be no problem. And obviously, Johnson Street, and we checked it, and it's not on the emergency route. That's part of our criteria, to make sure that if we have to treat, make sure they are not on the emergency route. And again, Johnson Street is not on it. With the park adjacent to the street, we do acknowledge that that street experienced a lot of pedestrian, largely because of the park activities on a daily basis. Then on January 14, 2016, the city received a petition from the residents, more than 80% approval, that they are elect to proceed with the permanent treatment, and they are specifically requesting for installation of speed bumps. If approved, the speed bumps will be constructed this summer. That's how we have it laid out. In conclusion, staff have reviewed and determined that Johnson has met the requirements outlined in the NTMP program, and therefore recommend for approval of permanent traffic calming treatments. That concludes staff presentation.
Thank you. Any questions? We do have. Ms. Davis?
Thank you for the presentation, and I know the first traffic calming was on Balsam. And I guess my only feedback or input would be that, first of all, it looks very nice. Thank you, because they were going to start with just speed bumps, and they made them nice, so thank you. I think the other thing is, is I would hope that we'd find like a happy medium, that it's not disruptive to the neighborhood, but it makes people slow down. Because I don't think the ones on Balsam, you know, really impact the driver if they're moving, type of thing. So that would be, and I'm sure you have your requirements of how, you know, how big it can be and those kinds of things, but I don't think, I mean, I think people still cruise down Balsam. It doesn't really impact some people's behaviors. Some it does, others it doesn't. So that would be my only feedback, especially since we have two young kids here that say they want to ride their bikes, that we make sure that it's just not kind of a, you know, boo-boo, you know, that it is a. But I know that's bad news for the neighbors, too, because they don't want to hear that you know, every day. But I think that's just feedback from Balsam. So that would be my only feedback, is that we love them on Balsam, they're really nice, they're nice-looking, but I'm just wondering if they have as much traffic calming measure as we could possibly have.
Thank you for the comment. We did conduct an after-study for that speed bump on Balsam Street. In general, it does what it's supposed to do. And again, I think that we should be aware that speed bump is to slow folks down. And certainly, if you look at a stretch of roadway in between stop signs, is that we want drivers to stay constant at the speed limit, in this case, 25 mile per hour. We don't put speed bumps like in shopping mall. That pretty much penalizes drivers. You have to come to a stop to negotiate over it. The idea here, what we put out there, is to keep, maintain the speed desirably at a speed limit, so that we get that operating speed and allow a safe environment for the pedestrian. That's what we're trying to accomplish. But certainly, we did a post-study for the general driving public. We pretty much lowered their speed. In our experience with previous treatment we've done to other street, there are going to be, there is going to be a few percentages, no matter what you do.
Yeah, they'll cruise. All right, thank you, and that's a good explanation, too, because a lot of times you do think speed bumps in like parking lots.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out.
Mr. Matthews?
Just under the financial impact here, that $50,000, is that the yearly budget for speed bumps, bumps all over the city for the year?
It is.
And I'm sure it's not for just these two?
No, that's the total budget.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I don't, what's the cost, Steve, do you know, on these two? Did you mention them?
It depends, you know, we have two types. The one is type asphalt, the other is concrete, like it's a pretty nice one. And it ranges between $3,000 to $6,000, depends on construction, be it year-to-year. But our experience between those two types, again, it ranges between $3,000 to $6,000 each.
Ms. Wooden?
I would suggest that Christie drive down Independence north of 44th. There's three speed bumps right by Pennington, two make your car go clunk, and the other one's the kind of smoother one. So the ones on Independence, those are the ones that slow you down. I drive it every day. And I support this very much because it is right next to the park, and I'm sure that, you know, kids aren't going to be paying attention, so we really need slower traffic. And I do know, and I see it, people cut through there when Kipling's backed up. I have one other suggestion, and I don't know what the cost would be, but I don't think it would hurt to put up some signs, and I don't know what they would say, but just some signs about children playing or something like that, and that's a suggestion. I don't know if it's possible, but just to remind people as they're driving along that you are next to a park, there's kids around, and just to be aware.
The, along with these two speed bumps, there will be a sign warning of speed bumps. I think that will be plenty enough for them to pay attention to the bumps, that it will take care of itself.
I do have a couple of people signed up for public comment. Adam, you've already spoke. Margaret Nelson?
Thank you, I'm Margaret Nelson, 9865 West 37th. So one of those speed bumps will be right in front of my property. I just moved in a couple of months ago. It's my understanding that the previous owner was concerned a little bit about drainage. Apparently, that's been addressed somehow. I just wanted to have my vote for yes, we do need them. And also, there is a bit of a drainage problem. I, as I haven't been here for a downpour, my understanding is that there's a large amount of water that runs down that street. And I was hoping if perhaps there's a way to just slightly cheat it on the uphill side so that the extra runoff will go towards the open space and not towards the houses. Thank you.
Did you want to comment on that, Steve?
Yes, more than happy to. Every street we, you know, most of the street we've built to see, there is a crown in the street, so water do not collect in the middle of the street. If you notice it, there's curb gutter on one side, the park side. That's where the water collects, and as it travel north. On the east side, there isn't any curb gutter. There should be roadside well, that's where the water collects. The speed bumps are put on the roadway, which is, you know, sitting in the crown, and the water usually, once it hits the pavement, it goes to the side. So we don't foresee, and we, we have bumps in others, on the other street, it doesn't really poses a drainage problem. Again, the water, once it's collected, it gets to the side of the road. And on one side, we got curb gutter to take care of it, and the other is natural drainage well that should take care on that side.
I believe we're ready for a motion?
Ready for a motion? "I move to approve the installation of a traffic calming device on Johnson Street between 35th Avenue and 38th Avenue in accordance with the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program."
We have a second? Second. Second by Ms. Davis. Any further discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you, that concludes our business meeting. Do we have any city managers' matters?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I attended a ribbon cutting last Thursday. Some of you were there at the Morningstar Senior Living Center. Very nice new assistant living and memory care facility in Wheat Ridge. It's pretty amazing, on opening day, there was only one, one room left, available, left after, out of 52. So I think that just shows what the demand is for these types of facilities in the metro area. They are going up, but very, very nice facility, very well done, and I think it looks nice in that location. We also, that same evening, we had our third meeting for the Create Your 38th process. We are, just as scheduling update for council, we're planning to bring an update back to City Council on April 4th on the entire process. And then there is a open house scheduled for April 27th for the public, for one final review and additional comments on the process and on the alternatives. Then, May 16th, we plan to bring a final discussion back to City Council to get direction on how you would like to move forward. So just an update on that.
Thank you. City attorneys' matters?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
City clerk?
I did have one thing, I just wanted to kind of remind any council people that don't know this, and also the public. It has to do with the boards and commissions. And when people work for the city, they can't serve on boards and commissions. That's been a, it's in the code, and it's a long time issue. It's, um, back in the day, I remember when I was on council, we had to tell someone, they, they had to leave the parks commission because they had gotten a job at the, working for five bucks an hour at the desk at the community center. So just, just heads up, in the future, when you're appointing people, you might want to ask them that if they are, if they are employed by the city. And I've, we've had a conversation with Mr. Dahl, and he said, you know, someone who just occasionally does something for the city and is a contract, and maybe teaches a class, a one-time thing, probably wouldn't fall in that category. But if someone teaches on a consistent basis, enough to where they get a W-2 form, he, Mr. Dahl kind of said, you know, that's, that's a pretty good guideline to consider someone an employee. So just heads up for in the future, you might want to remember that.
May I ask a question? Is it possible that we just put a little checkbox on the application?
We've already done that.
All right, there you go.
Yep, Kelly and I talked about it this morning.
Perfect.
Elected officials?
No, nothing for me, thank you. Nothing for me.
I'd just like to follow up. I sent Patrick an email relative to a specific grant program through the Colorado Department of Transportation relative to safety measures we may or may not be able to implement. So I just want to follow up on that and see if we can look at applying for that grant.
Yeah, we responded to you today. You probably didn't get a chance to see it, but Public Works is definitely looking at that, that one specifically. And there's also two DOT grants also available. They're both, they're all due in April. Genevieve and I were out in DC last week. Already, we met with the Department of Transportation and also another firm to talk about potential grants. And the Tiger Grant, and then also the Fast Plane, I think. I can't remember the name of the other one, they always change their names. But there's three potential grants out there that, that we might have some projects eligible for. We also learned, while we were in DC, and the mayor learned this in Portland at the Smart Growth Conference, but federal government has some interesting loan programs for transportation projects, the Riffia and, Riff and the Tiffia. And they're both very low-interest grant programs. So it's something we're looking into to see if that could help fill the gap for the Wadsworth Project and even the, the Clear Creek Crossing Project for the infrastructure that's needed out there. So it'd be a lot cheaper than going out and issuing bonds. And so we're looking into all that right now. Thanks, Zach.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Mr. Bond?
Thank you, um, let's see, I was going to say something about Morningstar first. I was at that ribbon cutting, and it was just a fantastic event, a beautiful facility. And we, if people have a chance to get down there and see it, please do. And obviously, if you want to be a resident, hurry. But we should be proud of it, certainly we're proud of it in District Three. The city should be proud of it as, as well, so that is all I have.
Ms. Davis? I have two things. First of all, I'm sorry I missed the ribbon cutting. I was in San Francisco for my day job, so, so I'm sorry I missed the ribbon cutting. But I do want to make note and just celebrate that corner. Again, the corner looks wonderful. If you all could close your eyes and remember what it looked like. But I think that's a good example of urban renewal and renewal Wheat Ridge. So I do want to celebrate that corner because it's very busy and very fun and looks great. The other thing I want to do is thank our police officers and, and make a comment that I know today, Bailey, the town of Bailey, celebrated their officer that, and said goodbye to their officer that lost his life a week, or I think it was actually two weeks ago. So with that in mind, I also, I want to thank our police officers because they do a lot for us out there. So thank you for that.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Nothing tonight, thank you. Not, nothing more, no.
I do have something, this is concerning District Four, and this is concerning a longstanding issue that's been concern of several residents along the I-70 Frontage Road. And the concern is, if you can think about the I-70 Frontage Road from the street going up to the fence at I-70, there's a lot of grassy area in there. It's weeds mostly, and weeds that grow really tall. They're very healthy weeds. And they collect trash, and it's an eyesore. People dump trash in there. There's been all kinds of paraphernalia found in there, from furniture to drug paraphernalia, lots of things in there. And it's a huge concern to those residents along there. Last fall, State Senator Sherry Jan and I met with some of the residents along with a representative from the Colorado Department of Transportation. And this land actually is the responsibility of the CDOT. And basically, they say we don't have any money. So that, that was basically his statement, we don't have money to take care of it. And so we looked into what it would cost the city to help to take care of this weed problem. Now, previously, this city had been responsible for mowing the first six feet from the street. And then this request was, what is it going to take to mow going up to the fence? And it's very steep, so if you've ever driven over there, it's, it's, it's not something you could really do with a mower. It's weed whackers and manual labor. Parks and Rec, who takes care of this, did get a estimate from a third-party vendor that we use. And the estimate is for nine months at $383 a cycle. And this would be, of course, during the months, probably starting around now, going into probably October. And the total cost is $3,447. And I've been in touch with Patrick, and he's going to talk about it a little bit, but it's kind of been integrated into the budget.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Wooden. This has been a very long-term issue and problem. We've dealt with it for many, many years, and it's, we've met with CDOT many, many times, and it's, it's just hard to keep up on it. And we were able, we went ahead and added this to the scope of work for our contract firm, just to go ahead and do it. We think we can absorb this in the budget this year. If not, may have to come back at the end of the year. But if it's, you know, sometimes it's the rainy season or very dry season, and there's, and they have to, they may skip a cycle because they just don't, there's nothing out there to weed whack. We'll have a savings. But I felt it was important enough, it's just been an issue and an eyesore that if we don't do it, it's not going to get taken care of. So if we don't hear any different from you, we'll just, we'll move forward in that direction and see how it goes.
So this will be taking care of the weeds, hopefully, that collect trash and other things. The other issue that the residents were concerned about were some of the fences along there. I don't know if you've noticed the fences along I-70 going from Harlan all the way out. There's some fences that have been down and other fences that had graffiti. Now, the city's taking care of a lot of the graffiti. We've been pretty attentive on that. But we have gone back to CDOT and said, we're going to take care of the grass that's technically yours, but we really want to let them know that we're very concerned about these fences. Some of them are huge sections that are down, so that's what, that's what we're going to go back to CDOT about the fences. The third issue that the residents over there had concerns about was the stop sign at Garrison and the Frontage Road right there. I don't know if you're familiar with that. But on the north side of Garrison, it's a four-way stop. But on the south side, it's only a two-way stop. And there's been some fairly serious accidents. Again, that's a CDOT road, those are CDOT signs. And our Public Works has been looking into it for quite a while as to can that be changed back to a four-way stop? And, and how we can make that happen. So I know Scott Brink is still working on that. But those are the three issues we met with residents on over there. The city's going to take care of one, we're going to work with CDOT on their fences, and we're still finding out about this four-way stop.
I believe CDOT, didn't they, they also offered to pay, I think, half of the increased cost for the...
That wasn't guaranteed.
Wasn't guaranteed, okay.
We talked about it, but it wasn't guaranteed. So maybe we can go back to them and ask them to...
Yeah.
But it's really an eyesore, and it's a huge concern for those residents. And like I said, it collects a ton of trash. Those weeds are sometimes taller than me, and they're huge weeds, so...
On that four-way stop, there's a sign that has a stop sign in it as though it's coming up ahead. But that just doesn't seem to be legal to have a sign with a stop sign in it as sort of a preparatory stop sign that doesn't...
We're, as Genevieve mentioned, we've been working with CDOT to get their approval to, to make some changes to it. And it's not going as quickly as we, we'd like, but we're, we're still pushing them on it to do it right.
It's one of our unique qualities, huh?
Madam Mayor, I just, you said the four-way stop on the, on the north side of... I know, I know. I just, I, I go through that intersection once a week when I go give piano lessons over in Arvada. And I have actually thought about, how could I publicly thank everybody that goes through that intersection? Because that four-way stop, and I go there, go through there about 3:30. And it's pretty, it's, it's busy already. And it just works like clockwork. Everybody pays attention, I've never had any trouble there. And I'm just like so proud, it's like, this is America, and people follow the rules, and it's really cool, and so, anyway.
Fortunately, there's been some serious accidents there.
Okay, I only have one thing that, in a way, thank you, Mr. Matthews. If we need to remember, if we forget that we are here to serve as citizens, it doesn't hurt us to remember it once in a while, it really doesn't. We have to keep that high, and I think we all do, just as you just reported regarding what's going on District Four. I am glad that the council voted to defend, and they devoted, devoted to defend item 300 because it was the citizens' choice, and it is part of our charter. So a good reminder to keep that in mind, and I know I will. And I don't think I have anything else, other than good night. And we don't have any puns tonight. Can somebody make one up here real quick? It wasn't very good. Thank you all.